I heard the alarm and you're standing out there and then that's it. So you were alive for a couple of seconds.
Yeah, yeah. And.
I would love for someone to conclude sessions at the end.
Yeah, no, I uh. Okay, we're, we're, we're live.
So to summarize from our close session, the city has decided to not accept. The offer gets placed. Settle with pleasant fines. Litigation will move forward, negotiations will take place. We'll see where it goes. Well, next up, we're on new business fee schedule updates.
Uh, yes, uh, counsel, I sat down with the staff, uh, we went through everything and, uh, we made the, uh, following determinations. Uh, roughly across the board for, uh, nightly campsite rentals, uh, we increased that by five dollars. Uh, we have also increased the, uh, weekly, uh, campsite rental as well.
Were these increases based on historic usage of the campground? And applying the new fee schedules that that put in the campground to a projected break even status?
Well, this is something we talked about, we're going to ease our way up to that, we're not gonna lump some at all in one time.
If this, if this based on historic using and applying these fees to that historic usage, does that bring us to a breakeven?
It's gonna bring us close.
Turns us close?
Yeah, and we'll know more as the season picks up, uh, but i- the, the campsite is filling up. We're getting a lot of calls for reservations.
And are, uh, has the online? Fee schedule, is that being maintained? Cause that was a problem where that didn't get updated in the past.
As soon as this is updated, we're gonna make the changes, the changes will reflect across everything.
Is that something you do in office or is that done by a third party? Or you do it, okay?
Um. Any questions on the campsite fees? Otherwise we'll move on. Uh, sanitary lots are. We would like to set those at three hundred a pop, up from two fifty.
Are the veteran lots the same three hundred dollars or any different fee?
No, they are not the same, uh.
I don't believe the vehicle charges for the veterans lots, I don't collect money for them.
That's something there.
I'll answer that question from our main post meeting.
Uh, the next page here, we have some adjustments to, uh, public works. Uh, street sweeping per hour. We need to, we would like to set that to one hundred and fifty dollars up from seventy-five. Uh, snow plowing, which includes salt sand. Uh, set to three hundred dollars per hour, up from one forty-five. Sidewalk sweeping, and this is the, uh, bobcat with operator per par, so per snow event, seventy-five dollars up from twenty. Uh, nuisance cleanup per hour, we'd like to set that at two hundred dollars per hour, one twenty-five. And skid steer two hundred per hour up from one hundred. And then you'll see at the bottom there, payloader has been added and we're asking for three hundred dollars per hour. And I do have, uh, Public Works Director Ron here tonight, uh, to field any questions, the logic behind it is. Um, it, it takes a lot of resources to keep those machines maintained and, uh, I mean. We ask them to do some things that are, um, you know, pretty tearing on, pretty wearing and, uh, this will go a long ways towards. Uh, keeping the maintenance up.
What, what kind of, of cleanup? Is a nuisance cleanup, what, what is that gonna cover?
Right, so anything that is determined to be a nuisance. By, by, uh, it could be, uh, having ten parked cars in your front yard. In which case, um, you know, that two hundred dollars might not actually cover it, but. That's why we wanna set it a little higher.
Ordinary enforcement.
Correct.
All the, all.
Is if you force the city to use our time, our labor, our equipment to go and clean, we're gonna, we're gonna ask you for two hundred dollars. And, uh, again, part of that is, we don't exactly know what kind of equipment we're gonna need either. So. Uh, going down utility.
Go question on the sidewalk sweeping?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we got it bumped up from twenty to seventy-five. I know I did see out there cleaning along eighty-seven, you're sweeping up the sidewalks there. Are each one of those parcels that you sweep in front, are they being charged seventy-five dollars?
That was from when we clean, clearing off, most of that was already, I, I checked which sidewalks had already been done. But when I was clearing off, okay, by them mailboxes, I was ending up getting snow pushed back onto the sidewalk, so I went with the broom real quick to clear it off.
Well, I walked that quite often there and a lot of those sidewalks were never, never touched. So did you go through there and clean up some of those that hadn't been touched?
That had.
So they're gonna get charged seventy-five bucks, uh, or twenty until this.
Twenty before.
Do we send them on a bill or how do we bill them?
Because I miss it.
Yeah.
Actually, I believe.
If they let us know the property addresses and names, we send them a bill.
Oh, okay.
And if they don't pay it, it gets assessed to the property tax.
You answered my question, thank you.
Is that for all city lots or just ones on major roads like you mentioned eighty-seven?
Any place or sidewalk.
Anywhere in city lands, I believe.
Uh, utility late fees, uh, right now it's set at five dollars per month and we would like that increased to ten.
Incentive.
A little more incentive and it, it takes a lot of time to go through all the lists and then we send notices. Those are stamps, those are more envelopes, it's more of Diane's time, it's more of Kelly's time, it's more of my time. And, um, you know, ten dollars, uh, you know, reasonably fits the bill considering how incredibly expensive, uh, postage is. Because we send one letter, we're paying for the paper, paying for the toner, paying for the stamp and then. It.
The time that's a two to three days.
Yes.
You know, speaking of all those fees, you, you just need lots of toner and the paper and the stamp and so forth. I think of the water sewer bills, does the city have the ability to send those bills all electronically?
We do not.
We don't have that ability.
Not with Banyan as of right now.
Cause if we did, that could save a lot of money.
I, I get now, I live in Medina, everything is right over email, a couple clicks and it's done, very convenient and. If Banyan offers that in the future, we're definitely gonna wanna take advantage of that.
In fact, a couple. Providers that I use, in order to encourage you to accept your bill electronically. They assess a dollar ninety-nine cent bill per month to send a hard copy. Re- reimburse them for their costs?
Yeah, totally, I, yeah, completely believe it.
So. If we were able to do that in the future, I think it would be a, a good benefit for the city.
Uh, the, the most we can do right now is just automatic check-in withdrawal.
Alright, so the motion is to approve an update fee schedule as presented reflecting adjustments to cover the cost of administration improvements and maintenance effective immediately. I have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'm moving second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All post same sound. Any favors can do.
Next up, the local board of appeal and equalization meeting informational.
Uh, council, this is just informational for you, um. You see, um. The, what the county sent us, uh, from Jason Jorgensen. Um. Pending your questions, uh, this is gonna be set for nine AM on Thursday, April tenth. Uh, here in the council chambers. And one hundred percent of the council has done their certifications for this, so, uh. I, that's all I have. Uh, lifeguard.
I guess I thought that I would ask. Going, who, who do you want there? To hear the board, somebody. The council has to have two members present.
Yeah.
Who are those members?
Well, you just got certified, correct? You got certified this last year, yeah, and I'm certified, you're certified.
Everybody.
Yes.
Everybody is. April tenth is a, what?
Thursday.
Thursday. And at nine AM. I could be here. And you're at school, you got. You're in your brother driving truck.
Decided to move truck, probably not. I could, no, I, if you can find somebody else to fill in the awesome.
I could be available for that.
Yeah.
So it'll be myself and Mike then. People attempt that nine AM for that. Alright, now we're on to lifeguard.
Uh, council in front of you, uh, I have, uh, some information on what the requirements are to have a lifeguard here in Minnaga. And then I also have a, uh, job description put together, um. Before I send this to attorneys to get it certified, is there anything you'd like me to add, take away? And, uh, I mean, pending your comments, uh, this will go down, get approved, come back up, and then the plan is to. Um, begin advertising end of March, beginning of April.
I think looking at the categories they have for their certifications, I'm thinking we need the deep water. It wasn't, I thought it was open water, but it must be the deep water.
Why?
The shallower waters probably more of a three and four foot.
When, when you go to just Google and say, what do I need in Minnesota to be a lifeguard? First thing that pops up is Red Cross Lifeguard Certification or equivalent. And in that lifeguard training, that's where they get their CPR and then their other. Programs within the training.
That's why I'm just wondering when they have these five listed. I'm wondering if that's something. That would be more of a requirement.
And it.
Are all five of these part of that program or do you pick your track?
I believe you pick your track, but I don't know for sure. Uh, what I can do though in minimum qualifications, um. You know, right now we have current American Red Cross Lifeguard Certification or Proof of Enrollment. Um. In which case.
I think it needs to be deep water.
Okay.
I feel.
I have to go with you.
You get out there where the dock used to be, you're at eighteen, twenty feet, that's not gonna be considered shallow water.
I don't like.
I, I just couldn't find anything specific where i- it said, in order to be a lifeguard, you must have. I, I didn't see that, the only requirement was.
Well, the definition of what qualifies deep and shallow, is it over the head versus?
I, I, I don't have an answer, he comes.
You maybe could call other city courts that have had lifeguards like Detroit Lakes and others and ask them. About that question.
Detroit Lakes does have a open beach like we do, so they, they would probably have some good info.
Okay, I'll call DL.
And then if we have to add that into the DL description, we just add that as, we'd want that as part of the certification, if we thought, if, if that's what DL does. There'd be a reason for it.
Okay, uh, and so just to, for the sake of not bringing this back, uh, in March, it's just council consensus.
Wouldn't they have to be certified when we bring them, cause it says here, or proof of enrollment in the lifeguard training course?
Well, we don't plan on opening, uh, or having the lifeguards there until June sixteenth, right? So between the time that they send us their application. Um, they can say, hey, I am enrolled. We'll still accept that.
Well, then I think you should add there something, uh. Certification must be obtained by. I mean, within Google fifteen, whatever date that was you said. Just to add some clarity to it.
Okay, we can, we can add that. Uh, proof of course completion. Uh, no later than June sixteenth.
I shouldn't believe. The hours. I, I think I missed it. Um. How many hours a day, like what is this?
Well, so not real sure how many hours a day. Do we want them to start at noon and go till eight? Are we gonna have two lifeguards, are we gonna split it up?
So, so that will probably depend on how many. Yeah. Cause it won't be seven days a week.
No, um. I mean, ideally, uh, peak hours, I would say between three and probably eight PM is when we'd really like someone out there.
I think it was, you, I mean, years past, it was six o'clock. The six o'clock whistle went off. Lifeguards called everybody in. They went off. And after that, it was swim on your own risk.
We must no longer have a six o'clock.
But I just, yeah, but that's just how it was. I mean.
Back in the day.
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're a seventeen, eighteen year old kid, you're gonna watch your. Seven, six o'clock. I mean, I did when I was working, I'm like, okay, it's six o'clock, I'm out of here, then we go. So.
I, I had a question here, where are we gonna offer swimming lessons?
Well, that's the other part of it, they used to offer that and they did that in the morning. So it was like their first thing at ten o'clock in the morning, they did swimming lessons for first hour or two.
Yeah, that would.
Hard to do with one.
I think that would be a nice offering.
If we're gonna do it, we need to charge something for it.
Oh, I don't.
It was always, it was always really reasonable and, you know.
Five dollars or three dollars.
I'm not sure, I'm sure organizations would donate or give VF and their lines and so forth.
Well, the first, the first thing would be. Do we find, do we get anybody applying and then?
See if you can build in a swimming.
Well, if you're. If you're gonna be living on the essential duties and responsibilities, that's why I was asking, if we're gonna do life. Or, uh, swimming lessons, we'd maybe wanna list it as a duty.
Well, uh, again, I think it, it kinda depends on how much people, or how many people we get. And if that person even wants to, right? Um, so, uh. I could make another, uh, job description for, uh, swimming lessons, or I can, I can just add on here under, uh, work requirements. You know, potential. Because I, I think we wanna satisfy having lifeguards first, if we get the personality here that. Hey, yeah, I'm okay with teaching swim lessons, I'll develop a plan and give it to you, great, alright. Then here's what we're gonna do.
There's also certificates. Separate, so like when I was at, like. I was Red Cross Certified Lifeguard and to go and swimming.
You don't drive, you don't drive bus in the summer.
No, I'm listening. I let that expire a long time ago. Have no desire to.
Let's act. You don't wanna sit on the chair?
Uh, but my point in that is that. Once again, if we opened up this second door of. Lessons, then they're prerequisite. Requirement, you know what I mean, it has to be not just Red Cross Certified Lifeguard. Red Cross Certified Instructor.
Oh.
So you don't wanna get too many restrictions in there, we're looking, saying, no, I'm not gonna.
Right, that's why it has to be two different jobs.
Yeah, it's gotta be two different jobs.
I think we start by just seeing if we get anybody.
I didn't want you to get blind side of the, making that they were the same.
So what do we need to?
Uh, I do have a motion, um, and i- the motion is to approve, uh, the hiring of seasonal lifeguards for the city beach. With recruitment efforts beginning at the end of March in accordance with the established job description and pay rates. Uh, I also have a flyer, I apologize, council, yours is not in color.
It's nice.
Um. That.
Couple, couple questions on there for you.
Yes.
When, when we, when we. Advertise, we want to present a, a professional image for the city of Minnaga. And there was a couple of things on there that kinda, about what?
The dog taking a crap?
That, that's an AI generated image, okay, I just, I asked.
So your, uh, life under the standard cover letter and resume in small print. Wide cover lever for a hot, for a lifeguard, get some practice in you. I, I know that's a tip at humor. But I, I think that should probably come out for, uh.
Our, our target audience is the high school. And, uh, you know, and I, I, I sent this to, uh, the secretary and said, hey, can you look at this? And, you know, tell me if you have any problems, she sent back, no, it's great, uh, let me know when I can post it. Um, if, if you want it, uh, if you want that taken out, I, I have absolutely no problem with it, uh.
I just, that's just how I looked at it, is that, you know. City, we wanna put on a professional presentation.
I think every, every city, every city coming out.
I, I get it that that's kind of a, uh, supposed to be a bit of humor inside of, inside of the post and the other is. Uh. The, the next to the bottom bullet point, uniforms slash swag. Now, I know what the colloquial. Abbreviation for swag is, but what were you meaning by it? And if it's, if it's the colloquial meaning, I'm thinking it's gotta come out.
No, no, it's, it's, uh, like, um.
Scientific, wild.
No, 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 swag is just like, um.
Merchandise.
Yeah, yeah, clothing, sweatshirts, um.
That's what, that's what it's called, it's swag.
Yeah.
It's, it's a slang for, I mean.
Key fair, key fair.
Yeah. Hell, no, 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 it's, it's. That's what the kids call it, swag, I mean, there's.
I wouldn't find that.
Yeah.
Century.
Yeah. Ah, did, yeah, just, it, it's definitely some slang, uh, when.
That's sort of aiming at that younger crowd.
Okay.
Speak their language a little bit.
It's a generational difference.
Yeah.
And the uniform, I imagine you're talking a terry cloth. The robe and a swimsuit.
Well, yes, yeah, we would, yes.
Well, that would give us, I had thought about that, that gives us a little bit of control of what they wear so that nothing.
So they look all the same, they have the same.
Nothing's too.
Yeah, yeah, and.
And we provide you a tire so that they can be identified as they're.
Easily identified.
Okay.
Then I just, I just had a couple of general questions when we talked about lifeguard and one was. Does the city even have? In store somewhere, you know, the lifeguard chair, the elevated.
Years ago, I don't know.
So we have two.
They have two? Alright, so thank you very much.
They're back.
Okay. And another thing I got thinking is, do we have bullhorn, loudspeaker, bullhorn loudspeakers?
Police department has them.
Yeah, but they may need.
No, they, they, the, no, the hornable ones.
That's what I'm talking about, they may need them for their purpose.
It came, I think it came from the lifeguards, the one, it just got brought in back there when they, when they quit using the.
The lifeguard?
Lifeguards, it just got put back.
Okay, thus, we may need to update our gear. And who knows how long it's been sitting.
Know if we even have that.
And well, let's.
Before we're, we're getting way out in the weeds here, let's, let's get out of the weeds and get back to the motion at hand and this is stuff we can deal with if we even get a lifeguard. We gotta move these meetings along a little bit, so can I get a motion to the effect of approving the hiring of the seasonal lifeguards? Second, by Keith, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all post same time, let's carry five zero. Alright. PLM like the different. So.
Okay, uh, yeah, I just reached out to Jody and Brett, I'm on the Spirit Lake Association Board of Directors. And anyway, uh, the Spirit Lake, uh, Association is spearheading an initiative to. Do some weed control for property owners, but anyway. PLM Lake and Land Management Company is the one that we're working with and I know the city contracted with that same company to treat the weeds at the public beach. And anyway, our SO, Spirit Lake Association Board. Uh, is aware of the fact that we do have some weed issues down by the boat landing and the fishing pier. And, uh, they wanted me to reach out to the full council here and have a discussion. You know, as, if you've had a chance to read this handout, it kinda lays it out there. Uh, what we're proposing and that would be to, uh. Start at the boat landing and go two hundred feet towards the beach and treat that section of the lake. So it would, uh, enhance, uh, the enjoyability of fishing and boating in that area because. This kind of a recreational area that you see a lot of people hanging out, bringing boats in and. There's a lot of kids that fish off that pier and. We live on the lake and we go by there quite often in our pontoon and it gets to be a real mat of weeds out there in front of that pier, maybe you guys are familiar with that. So the SLA would be willing to help financially. Partner with the city if we'd be willing to treat a portion of, uh, of that, uh, recreational area.
Is it known what the cost would be?
Well, to do fifty feet of lakefront and go a hundred feet out, uh. We're treating our beach at seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. The city contracted with PLM to do the beach and if I remember right, that was, uh.
I think, I think we paid twelve eighty-five.
Twelve eighty-five for, it was two fifty foot spots, but I believe it was fifty feet on the edge of the beach and fifty feet at the. Pier or down by the boat landing, we split it out that way, cause the weeds are encroaching on the beach and they're, well, you know how the boat landing. So that's how we had designated. I don't know if PLM has that on their map that way. They should have mapped out, I imagine, who's doing it.
But anyway, that being said, which is great, uh. You know, the Spirit Lake Association, we would be willing to partner with the city to expand that area so we cover more. But I know we're talking permitting and making sure we're meeting the criteria of the DNR. And I think you pointed that out to me, that's something we might have to explore a little further, right?
We, we essentially have to wait for the original permit to come back. And then that will tell us how many additional square feet we can, we can add to it.
As the city owns from, uh, the motel all the way across up to Kitty Jacobs' property, is that correct?
Yep.
That's hundreds and hundreds of feet.
Yep.
So I guess my question is, uh, is the council willing to? Partner with the SLA to? Add additional footage there to control some of that weed, uh, issue.
Funds for it in our budget?
It's a question I, I've put to Brett too, is there any pot of money laying around somewhere that we could, uh, look out to that?
Line up that, when we use?
So, yes, there is funding.
With all cap in the unallocated reserves.
Yeah, no, we're, that's out of the question, um. There, there is funding in the beach that we can pull, uh, however, I, I think. I, I, I think that the, the discussion should, should be just, I would say, yes, we can do this, but we need more information from PLM Lake first and the DNR.
Can.
And if we can, then, uh, yeah, we can, we can definitely, the city can, uh, contribute.
So do I wanna, do we want to? Make a motion to proceed further until for, for further information, or do we wanna table it till we get further information?
We're waiting on the information at this point.
Correct.
They've got, PLM's got their permit into the DNR, waiting on the DNR. And then that'll tell us, cause they're gonna go by your lake area, how many feet. They're gonna give you a percentage that you can.
Were you looking to get a motion tonight, Derwin?
Well, if there's a consensus, I mean, uh, the SLA has got funds to. Contribute to the project or the issue of.
When you talk about partnering with the city, SLA referring, um, is that a matching partnership, like a fifty-fifty?
Yeah, we, we would.
Match.
Be willing to match a hundred percent of where the cost is.
Oh, okay.
So I guess maybe. Make a motion that pending, uh, yeah, at the rate, uh, permitting all comes together, we would be willing to partner with the SLA, Spirit Lake Association?
Or did we wanna have a dollar limit on?
Uh, we're at, we were at twelve eighty-five, I think for a hundred feet, if I remember it.
Yes.
So we were talking another twelve eighty-five, like, could it be another?
We would, that's why we would put in twelve eighty-five and the city would have to come up with another twelve thirty-five.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd make that. That sounds fair, I mean.
And there's, we have that money in the budget.
We, we do, yes, yes, we're, we're comfortable right now.
I'll make the motion that Derwin said. In. Trying to, trying to remember what she said. But it was fair, it's fair, yeah.
The motion is for the city to partner with SLA to treat. Two hundred feet, two hundred more feet for weeds in the lake. Splitting the cost evenly, met to a maximum of twelve hundred and eighty-five dollars to the city. Alright?
Yeah, yeah.
Keith makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. All post same time, let's carry five zero.
Hey, uh, the SLA thinks.
You know what kind of chemical is this they use, Derwin?
It's all new to me, but it's, uh, I think the DNR. Recognize that it's safe.
Is that a, is that a one season chemical or does it have a residual?
I think it's every, you have to do it every year and maybe at some point the weeds won't be coming back, so you wouldn't have to.
Sanal Stocking Lake did that.
I know, yeah.
Last summer or the summer before, they've did it a couple of times.
You said it's pretty effective.
Yeah. Yeah. And the more, the more wave, more, uh, movement around that area is going to help out even that much more.
Good activity, that, that definitely affects them. More of the next up is clerk moments program request actually.
Uh, yes, council, uh, there is a program out there that you, uh, upload your agenda and upload your audio and video to, and it will generate your minutes. I, I understand that there are some quirks with it. Uh, however, it, it drastically reduces the amount of time that I am uh, listening to audio, re-listening to audio, um, trying to make sure all the motions are exactly as is. Making sure that there's no miscommunication. It, it is a, uh, a, a great program, um. And I would really like to try it for, uh, six months. Uh, this is, uh, something that is in the budget for. And, uh, lastly, um, uh, yes, the format. I understand that, uh, some of the council really like the, uh, older format and, uh, I'd be willing to work around with that and keep that format. Uh, I did include an example, um, of what it auto generates in twenty seconds as well.
It was twenty second?
Yes.
Did you reach out to any communities that are using this software? To obtain their actual uh, uh, using experience and glitches and problems, how smooth it is. Did you reach out to anybody?
Yes, uh, I can't remember the name, can't remember the city. Uh, I, I pulled her from League of Minnesota Cities, the member link, uh, where this, uh, where I actually found it in the first place. And, uh, she basically said, uh, when she was talking about her experience with it was a little different than the experience that I had. Um, before, um, when she was using it, she had to have all the councils state their name every time they talked, right? Well, now, um, you know, the, the A I has advanced enough where I it, as soon as I plug it in, I hear your voice and then I identify your voice with your name. And then it picks it up for the rest of the, uh, uh, recording or audio and.
I don't know how it works when somebody has a phone.
Well, if, as long as you sound the same, uh, it, it should pick it up. Uh, is it perfect? No, but it, does it save me a lot of time? And in the six months that I'm asking for this trial period, this will also cover committee meetings, commission meetings. And if I can write just one grant in the time that it takes me normally to do minutes, this will have paid for itself.
Well, I'm all in favor of, of the efficiencies that saves time and, and open up the ability to, to handle other duties. But I've been around in business, I was in business long enough to know that the advertised product, they never tell you, here are some of the problems we've had. They'll advertise, here's all the good stuff. And you kind of find out about those problems either by asking other users. Uh, and usually it takes more than one. When I, when I would buy software, I, I would contact a minimum of three, target of five. And that gave me a pretty good picture of what I could expect. And I targeted more, I don't, not as interested in your praises. I want to hear where you were fussing this off. What was going on? What was wrong? That's, that's, that's what I'd like.
It, it's just, it, it is just that simple of upload a couple of files and then that's it. It is. It's, it's A I.
I'm an old, I'm an old guy. I'll admit it. I've been retired a few years now. When technology advances, you know, technology could have exceeded where my dumping off point was.
I mean, when I, I, I had a fourteen-day trial and I I was very impressed with it. Uh, I think the fact that you said he's asking for like a six-month extended trial, like an in-house paid for, you know, but I think that's what he's wanting to do is let's give it a run. Let's see how it works. If there's more glitches than it's worth. After six months, we can.
I don't want to go. I think it's worth, uh, picking a one out of. And then, you know, when you start looking at font sizes, uh, can you just make some adjustments? Maybe they have bold lettering on some of these motion things.
And, yeah, no, and exactly what you're speaking, uh, council member Tom Perry is, I can just use the old one, right? Because the, the problem is, is that what takes the most amount of time is listening to the recording again, looking at my notes, typing. And then someone comes into my office for twenty minutes and bends my ear about X, Y, Z. And, and then I am uh, I'm off somewhere else. And then, oh, I have to get back. So really what, what inevitably happens is I tell Diane, I'm shutting my door, no calls, no, don't, no one bother me because I have to get these done. And I like to get these done soonest. And with this program, I'll have, uh, a draft ready to, tomorrow by ten.
I think, yeah, I think it's just, are you able?
Oh, yeah. So I, I, yes, yes, I can adjust fonts. I can make it bigger. Uh, there are options to, uh, get very detailed. This is medium setting detail. Uh, there are also options for it to be, uh, minimalistic is, uh, all get out. It, it's really very customized.
I do like what Derwin said, especially where the motions are at, if we can get that. Bold, you know, where it's normal, normal font. And then you can say, okay, this is the motion is this, you know. So I think if we could do that, I, I'm in favor, especially for saving you time and ultimately saving the city money.
I'm confident that you, you put this to the generator, okay? A I kicks out a product. And then before it's official, you're going to peruse through these documents and make sure that they are accurate. Yes, and. Weird punctuation and make font adjustments. When, when I sent you, uh, this original one, this was me, I didn't do anything to it. I literally hit generate minutes and I was like, this is the coolest thing ever. And, and then I put an email, uh, to the council for the Friday update that.
You have the same exact mistake on, on the liquor store thing. You said Laura.
Yes, yeah.
That's I was laughing about because it would, would generate exactly that same.
Well, I have one more comment. I did reach out to Jensen Currie too and asked her about the laborious part. She said, you know, it is truly laborious. It's six to eight hours to go through the audio and make sure everything is done right. So by you standing, it's forty-eight hours, you're right on. I mean, they can, if you can cut it down to thirty minutes. I mean, that's, that's efficiency.
And we got, then we got seven hours to apply for grants.
If I can just do one thing that brings the city six hundred bucks in the next six months, it paid for itself.
Well, that's, that's a spinner in the water. You're biting on now. We'll be looking for a six.
Nah, I know. I mean, it's. It's doable.
If you can, that'd be great.
All right. So entertaining a motion to approve the subscription to clerk minutes at the base rate of ninety-nine dollars per month for a six-month trial period.
Second.
Bill. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, all post same sign. My hearing is as bad as mine.
Uh, next I have in front of you, council, um, Public Works hybrid, hybrid role. And I know that. Oh, no, that's, that's, that's I.
Oh, aye, okay.
Uh, yes. Uh, right, the campground, uh, has, yeah, since I've been here, it, it, it broke even and even turned a little bit of a profit in, uh, twenty-four. I really like to sustain that. And I believe in order to keep that success, we need to have, uh, someone permanently looking at the campground, um. And what I want to do for a public works, uh, slash, um, you know, full-time campground, building maintenance and public works. It's not a manager position, uh, but, and public works position. So, uh, this individual would also be, um, managing the seasonal hires. So if, if we bring Ralph or Jim back to help mow, uh, and then they would also, uh, manage the lifeguards as well. Make sure that, hey, we have, you're at where you're at when you're supposed to be scheduled. And, um,
And the campground, the beach and the cemetery would be under this person?
Yeah, as well as, as well as building maintenance. Yes, because, uh, you know, we've had a couple of instances where, um, we just, we don't have the bandwidth to have, uh, we've only had two public works employees for a while. We just don't have the bandwidth to say, hey, come and look at this problem and fix it. It like, no, I have to actually go plow snow. I, there's priorities and, well, we still have to have things fixed. And so if we're, the more we're able to do in-house, uh, just the better off we're going to be. And that's why I, uh, really push for the hybrid role because, um, obviously the, uh, the campground, the beach, uh, that's not twenty-four, seven, uh, freezes up and, uh, it closes. So, uh, then they would just go into public works and, uh, fulfill their duties there. And that's not to say that they wouldn't be, uh, you know, on the chores rotation or on the on-call rotation as well. So it's just, their focus is campground, beach, building maintenance, cemetery, then public works during the, uh, on season.
So you said, and as I read this through, that this uh, position would be non-union.
Correct.
Because it would be a management position.
Correct.
But then part of the year, they are operating as a public works laborer, which is a union position. How, how are you going to balance that? How's the union going to approach that? Second question I had is how are you paying the person? Are they going to get a manager's pay for say, I'll just pick date, say fifteen October to fifteen or fifteen April to fifteen October? And then from fifteen October to fifteen April, they drop down to a public work employee pay? How, how's that going to work?
So how it's written up in contract, employment contract? Correct. Well, I, I, I would say that they will maintain their base pay because during the off-season is when they'll be able to conduct repairs, um, make improvements, cut down trees that need to be pruned. Um, and that, I mean, that really includes the beach as well, the playground over there, um. So I, I don't see it being an issue in terms of, I, they're going to earn their pay. And this is also a, a time for them to. Do you have a comment, Mike?
No, I'm just going to say, well, I, I can accept that because of your explanation. But going back then to the union issue, isn't the union going to focus on this and say, hold it? During this part of the year, you have this person doing this and this and working on shores and working on water and blah, blah. That's a union position. How, how does that get handled?
Well, first of all, um, once we identify and lock in the job description that we want or the role that we want this individual to perform. And, you know, we, we get it to a point where we're happy with it. We're going to send it to our attorney and say, hey, this is what we want to do. Are we legal doing this? And then what do you anticipate the union saying about it? Because a, at the end of the day, i- it's what is best for the city and what the city council decides. And if it is a managerial role, which I fully intend this role to be, then I, I'm sorry, you, you're exempt from the union. And if you're exempt one day out of the year or, um, you know, twenty days out of the year, it, it doesn't matter. This is what we're asking you to perform. And this is the role we're asking you to fill. Now, that, that's my interpretation. Obviously, uh, our attorney could come back and say, well, actually, you know, well, I guess we've crossed that bridge and we get to it. And, and then, you know, if, if that is the case, then, uh, I would say we would just go and uh, there's a job description that the council approved in twenty-three for a public works laborer and we would just go down that route. And then, uh, keep the status quo as is. And, you know, if, if there is, uh, if the council does want, uh, you know, to is really what we're asking for is additional duties. And additional duties, there's going to be some change in description as well as, uh, compensation. So.
For the part, part of the year, when this person is, is actually operating with parks and beach and cemetery, doing those duties, it would seem to me that they would be a direct report to you.
It's going to be, uh.
And the part of the year where they're working with public works, their direct report would be to Ron.
That's correct.
So kind of a split depending on which side of the fence they're operating on. Is that correct?
Correct.
It'd either be a direct report to you or a direct report to Ron.
That's right.
Okay.
And that would have to be, uh, the way it is. And, you know, when I, when I think about that, because, you know, where do you, where, where do the lines cross, right? It's where are you working? The guys have, uh, swipe clock and they punch into campground, they punch into beach. So if you are punched into one of those areas, then that's where you're at. And then that's where the authority starts and stops as well as the responsibility.
That's a chain of command, like wherever you fall in.
Yes, yes, because, uh, you know, when, when I talked around about this, one of the things that I brought up is I don't want there to be any issues in delineating those duties. So it needs to be very deliberate on how we approach this.
This would be a good time to take a look at, possibly, uh, subbing out a couple or somebody to manage the campground, similar to what I think it's either Akeley or Nevis.
So I checked that out and, uh, uh, now, it's funny because you, you mentioned this during a council meeting and I, I went and talked to them afterwards, uh, Akeley about. And, uh, I can't remember the exact amount that they, they paid them, but it, for our budget, it would represent about half. It's how much, because they, they live there, they manage it, they take care of everything and, uh, they're, they're compensated pretty well for the season. And.
Oh, that's the live, live-on location.
Yes, yes.
The city of Odena has the camp, campground holes. And I don't remember how they, they have a camper, they have a camper, they, they stay there. But I don't remember how that works.
A lot of mouths to is just that area. They won't be doing anything at the beach. Just, just campground. And as we try to build up that campground and draw more people with this, this goalpost and whatnot, I think we, we got to be, make sure we're well on top of that. And getting it just so and looking just so and, you know, having somebody that it's like Ralph always got along with all the campers and little B S here and there and, you know. They would ask for him by name. Where is Ralph?
They really liked Ralph.
And that, that's the same with Brian. Brian fits right into that. So that's where we're, we're hoping we can continue with that.
Is this something that Brian could?
I think, well, so I'm, I'm not going to say that I'm going to, uh, take this and throw it at any one person. What I will say is we're going to advertise internally for two weeks before it goes up to general public.
So are you looking, are you looking for a motion to go ahead and create a hybrid role? Is that what you're looking?
That's what I'm looking for, yes.
Is part of that motion to launch the position, you know, like you said, internally?
Yes.
Yes, well, yes, well, the.
Create it, but actually send it for it.
Correct. The next step is going to be, we're going to take this and we're going to send it to the attorneys and say, hey, are we legal? If they come back and say yes, then it'll be advertised, uh, well, no, it'll be advertised internally. If, if, if we don't get any applicants in two weeks, uh, yeah, it'll go out to public. If we get an applicant, then, uh, I'll ask probably the council or the hiring committee or personnel committee to, uh, possibly come in and sit down for an interview.
And if we do get someone for this position, it would change then what we would put out for uh, actual public works.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Right. So I've got a motion by Mike. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bill. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. All post same sign.
Have you, uh, advertised for a second public work presentation?
We, we just, well, there, there are some dominos that need to happen first. And once, once we, we get some more answers, um, after we advertise internally, then that'll kind of drive where we go next with it.
Let me just on to the cannabis.
Uh, council in front of you have the draft, uh, cannabis ordinance for, uh, the city Minaga. Now, a, a lot of the information here isn't going to change too much. Um, really where I want the council to focus is on three dash two. Where the, uh, zoning and land use for, uh, cannabis can take place. Now, inside of our one-five-one land use ordinance under cannabis sales, it is one thousand feet from a school, five hundred feet from a licensed daycare, five hundred feet from residential treatment facility, five hundred feet of a public park or athletic field regularly used by minors. So that really limits where we can put this. So. So that really limits where we can put this. So we have to put it somewhere. And. So I have the uh commercial business district, which would just be the uh. Uh, yeah, the highway and then the industrial district. And that's basically where everything is going to be uh placed on this ordinance.
Now, is this the ordinance, or uh, is this the ordinance that uh? We were waiting for that every city in the state need to adopt?
Correct.
Yeah, I just noticed.
We have some notes and I've.
Yeah, I just noticed that you have the city of Emily embedded in you in a couple.
Yes, so uh I. Uh, well, I, I reached out to Sourcewell and said, hey, uh, send me a bunch of ordinances and uh I, I chose uh the city of Emily's because. Uh, they did all the legwork on this already. And uh.
No, it's, I just.
Yes, yeah, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Two point five four and two point six.
So we brought this to the planning and zoning the other night, and they ran over it just to get their trunks on it also and.
Planning and zoning will have to hold for schedule of public viewing.
We understand how this all works. So we're going to, they were fine with what was here. They went through, and that was their only concern is that we keep it, you know, away from the school and whatnot. This is just kind of a here, this is what we're looking at. If nobody has anything major, whether we can move it forward into the.
So one second, if you eliminate the areas you stated, you said the actual business district goes up seventy-one?
Yeah, the one out where.
Okay.
We have that commercial area out there, C two.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
The only other question I had was on uh section three point three, three hours of operations. If uh maybe they could change on a Sunday, it starts at eleven, I'd like to get it asked. The hours of, of normal worship. So like started at one P M until six P M on Sunday?
I, I have no problem with that at all. Counselor Reverend?
Sure.
Okay.
Regular worship, not over at noon?
Well, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of churches are eleven to twelve, five churches are eight-thirty to nine-thirty, but.
One P M to six P M on Sunday?
Okay. Are you, I, I didn't do a really deep dive, and are you gonna limit the number of the? Cannabis businesses in the.
One to twelve thousand five hundred people, so we'll, we'll never do more than one in this town.
But it's all, is it county-wide? I thought there was something with the county that they're only being allowed one.
So I, I heard that as well, but then I heard that they're taking that away. So.
Okay.
Yeah, the county.
I, I, in question, um, obviously, we're doing our homework and getting our bases covered. Has there already been businesses to proposition in the city?
Yes.
So I did receive a phone call, yes, and, and an email, uh, all of them asking for like, hey, where, what's your ordinance say? Uh, and there, we had one that was interested in purchasing a property uh across the street from the elementary school. To, to, to cultivate uh cannabis. And we, we said, no, it's, it's not gonna be there. Uh, you're gonna have to look at our industrial district. So I, I got their email. I sent um, uh, you know, our zoning map and said like, hey, this is where it's. More than likely gonna be. So if you're looking in Minaga, this is the place to kinda plan around. So.
Well, just to, to reiterate for the press and for the public, we can't say no. On cannabis passed by the state, so we have to control it. And this is our, our way of controlling it. They've already uh, there's already a hydroponic place going in yours. Being applied for Shell River Township.
In what?
Shell River Township.
What, what's going on, sorry?
They're applying for a hydroponic grow-up operation, uh, and it will most likely be back. So we. This is why we need to get this done. Park Rabbit stood there a couple of months ago, Nevis has theirs. It's just a matter of getting something so we can control where things go.
This is just a review or do we need a motion?
No, no, this is, this is, this is a review. Uh, obviously, I have a couple of things in here to clean up. Um. But this is, this will be coming up uh pretty, pretty soon, right? And we'll probably have a public hearing uh, uh, at the council during the public hearing or.
That, that's something we need to discuss, but I think we had talked about it before um. Planning and zoning should, I, I feel planning and zoning should be planning and zoning. I don't see, we passed off that public hearing to them for some reason that I never quite.
That way when I got them, so you, you know why it was done that, or was it that way when you joined?
Um, yeah, we uh had them review uh all the ordinances. And then pass the recommendation on in full council.
You know, when planning and zoning was handling it instead of the full council?
That was. Deferred to them. I, it, it seems like it was either when I first got onto council, and I don't remember the written, the actual reasoning why. But they should have a play, they should have a part in.
Well, it's like, we ran, we ran this through, but the public hearing part of it, I, I just never understood why. Why they would do public hearing when nobody shows up to their meetings and at least a few people show up to our meetings. I just felt that if we do them at this meeting, there might be some actual comment and.
Well, if it's an issue for people, I mean, the notice of public hearing has to be published, so people are put on notice.
Heather, you had something?
I have a question about the hours.
Hmm.
If somebody decides to open a cannabis shop.
Hmm.
And you tell them they can't open to what? What does that mean to the liquor store that's already open at eleven?
Also, I was wondering, I, I, I thought we were open earlier than.
Eleven before on Sundays. I'm just wondering if they come back and then would I have to follow a different. Then to come back and change my hours?
It would be.
Well, it's two different products. You're talking with alcohol versus cannabis.
Yeah.
We can dictate the options.
This is a separate ordinance, so.
Yeah. And it sounds like you close at four?
Yeah.
And they, they're.
They'd be.
Which would break even. Same at eleven, one to six.
Good catch, though.
Just wondering, because they could be like.
Alright, but that can also, it. And, I mean, obviously, the attorney. Is he involved in this?
This is.
The ordinance, or is this?
So this is, this has already been run through Emily's legal. We're changing our, the wording and whatnot, and then we'll ship it off to our lawyer just to say, is this, does this meet all the criteria? We don't need him reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, no, no, I didn't know. If, if, if he was gonna go in for a review on it, cause when, since we're adopting it, can we put in there, can we put, you know, so. Change hours, you know, push hours back. Is that something we can do?
It's, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's just. Modify anything anytime.
Just, just to save our, ours, get from getting a litigation against us for a few, fifteen hours. Not, that's all I had for that. So, thank you.
Morning?
Uh, right, so administrative clerk on the union pay scale uh in regards to resolving the uh, the grievance that was filed. Um, the administrative clerk position is now on the uh, yeah, union pay scale uh as part of. Teamsters local three, four, six contracts. City has agreed. To the following under clause two point one, the employer recognizes the union as the sole and exclusive representative for all employees of the city. Uh, of the city of Minaga, Minnesota. Uh, who are public employees within the meaning of Minnesota statutes one, seven, nine, eight dot zero three subdivision fourteen, excluding licensed essential liquor. Licensed essential liquor store supervisory and confidential employees. Accordingly. The administrative clerk position will be placed on the union pay scale at step eight with a base compensation of twenty-seven forty-four per hour for. Twenty twenty-five. This adjustment aligns the position's compensation with. The correct pay scale, correcting the previous use of the city scale in error.
Who's on step eight four?
No, she was at step fifteen.
It was on a different pay scale. So moving over to the, the eight-step pay scale pays the same. It's just on the eight steps instead of fifteen. Still top of the pay scale.
So is this uh under attorney at all?
Uh, the actual grievance resolution that we proposed to Teamsters was, yes.
That's what was, this is what came out of that.
This is what came out of it.
Is that where they dropped their? Grievance?
They did drop it, yes.
Is this why they dropped the grievance?
Yes, yes, this is, th- this satisfies their grievance, yes.
Now, that pay level would be comparable with what her pay level was at on step fifteen.
Correct.
No, not for nothing.
Get a motion to approve the base. Prove the placement of administrative clerk position on the Teamsters local three forty-six union pay scale at step eight with a base compensation of twenty-seven forty-four per hour. For twenty twenty-five in accordance with the union contract and to correct the previous use of the city pay scale. So. You know. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Alright, now we're at number I, or letter I, set date for preliminary budget meeting. Mike, would you have mine? Well, I didn't have a, a specific date in mind, Jody. It said. The c- council needs to set the date for its first get-together on the twenty twenty-six budget.
And we've kinda talked about May.
Isn't that when we started the twenty-five budget was May of last year? You remember?
May thirteen.
Yeah. So my thought process on this is, we've got, we're doing committees. We have, after our. Meeting, we have March thirty-first. I'd like to see the committees meet in April. And start the department budget, what do they need?
So the national capital improvements they need.
All that stuff, just to kinda get into that, and then that can come forward to that first budget meeting. So that we've already collected from there.
I think.
So the people on those committees, you guys know, you know, what we need. Set up, set up your committee meetings so that we can. Have those prior to May, and then let's pick a date in May, we could have our first. Budget meeting.
Still, did department heads have to be at that meeting then? If the committee liaison brings it back to the full council?
I think they may wanna be. I guess it would depend on. If they're asking for the moon, you know, if the council, if the committees come back and say, hey, we want the moon, we want some justification on why we're buying the moon.
Well, I think it's a good idea to have the committee heads. At the full council meeting when we're discussing this, in case other council members do have a question.
And then.
It can get answered.
I like to see the department heads at that first meeting at least, just to get their take if, if there's, you know, some specific question.
He wants to meet in April with uh.
With the department. Yeah, we'll get to your, get to your committee meetings in April, and then we'll move on to a budget meeting in. May, and it looks like, was it May twelfth is our regular council meeting? Do we wanna do a budget meeting prior to that or after that?
We need to have it the same day.
No, that's what I'm saying, prior to that week or after, yeah. Do we want it to have her after? It makes no difference to me.
How about a Friday would probably work out better for Derwin, wouldn't it, Derwin?
He's, he's retired now.
Well, I'm getting close.
The ninth, would you?
I have Fridays would work better for me, but you know, we don't have to change this for myself. Just, Jody, you'll be right.
Well, we never know. I mean, who knows? Early in the season.
Restrictions might still be out.
Yeah, that doesn't bother. Uh, Bill, you always, you're at school till.
What, what time of day do you usually get done when you're, when you're running?
It vary. I can be done at noon, or I can be done at seven o'clock at night, so that's. Part of the game.
Cause the council meeting is planned for the twelfth, right?
Yeah, the twelfth is our regular council meeting at six. So if we're gonna do the ninth.
Well, in deference, in deference to the folks that are, are still going to a job. Would the Saturday work?
Yeah, then we gotta bring our department heads in on a Saturday.
Oh.
I'd like, I'd like to keep them on their regular, their regular days at least. Well, let's just decide a time on the ninth, and we just need to figure out a time.
Morning's work better. Ten o'clock?
You have a little make.
Block off two hours, ten to twelve.
I'll go on Friday.
Yeah, can you get a sub? Can you get a sub for the sub?
Hard, hard to know like this far out.
Right.
And it's like, oh, this far out should be good, but then.
No, it goes.
It's super busy, like the spring is insane, so.
And I don't know my schedule from month to month, so, I mean, I'd say majority, you know, get what works for the majority and. By making, I'll make it.
I mean, we're out two months.
Yeah.
We've got two months to figure it out. We put it on our calendars, we should be able to make it work one way or.
Bunch of like conflicts that we can modify the time and date.
Yeah, as long as we get it before we have to post a meeting.
So just put down budget meeting time to be determined or what?
No, I think we can set it for uh, uh, what, nine May, ten A M, and then uh, we got a few council meetings before then. Uh, so I'll just bring it up, uh, you know, put it at the bottom, a reminder.
May, what was the consensus again?
The ninth, the ten A M.
So, and you, you're saying the Friday was be, that worked well for you? You, you're open Friday, German? Yeah, that was the.
And figure from ten to twelve, right? Nine A M. Okay, are you up ten?
Nine, nine, actually, nine would be better than ten.
I like that.
Nine?
Nine A M, on the ninth. Like I said, we've got a, we got a couple of months here or something. Cause I would like to, I would like to make sure we have all of us in attendance for that kinda stuff, if, if at all possible. It's budgets very important. I like to get everybody's views on stuff. Alright. Let's get to that.
Yeah, nine, you're eleven. The ninth.
Yeah, and I would think in a couple hours, we should have something live by then where we can manipulate that budget as we talk about stuff.
Yeah, you can have it up on the screen so we can actually see that we're.
I think that way we can get a lot of stuff accomplished in a short period of time, and we'll know right where we're at.
Alright, that brings us to department committee report. Amy here?
She's not.
Up to that again. Alright.
Well, we can see from her report that she had a, they had a busy month like you. Hundred thirty-two calls. Got a few citations issued there. I believe that was all one incident, all four of those state citation.
Hey, what are special service detail? What is that? Is that like a funeral and you?
Yeah.
And you stop traffic or parade, is that what a special detail is?
Yeah, it's something like. I mean, like, a lot of it is if they go to the school for an event, for like homecoming or, yeah, uh, like the funeral, there's, there's. I think there's funeral traffic or traffic control, but the special service deal could be. Anything from leaving the, leaving the. Kids to state wrestling, or just any special event.
That's starting over, so.
Yeah.
And, and property watch, is that where somebody's gonna be gone for a while, gonna tell police department, hey, I'm gonna go and keep an eye on my property?
Yep.
Do a, do a drive-by.
Yeah, I like, well, it depends, yeah, but that's all, just check up, making sure that there's no, hey, no one's breaking into your house or. You know, house ain't on fire or something like that, but yeah, just. They'll check on you.
Um, what, what would qualify for? So in the morning and afternoon, there's always a squad, most time, Amy.
Yep.
When the buses are coming through, pick up and drop off. Whi- which one of those?
That'd be the traffic control. Wait a second from the bottom.
There's a, she doesn't sound like just twice a day, but she does.
Yeah, she does.
Morning.
Morning.
Eight and three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just so everybody knows, that transmission is in, that vehicle's been repaired. Thank you to Minaga B F W for the donation. We do have a resolution coming up for that. On the Siren update, there was zero feedback heard about this change. Just to clarify, as a comment at the last meeting, it was not one person requesting a change. It was a suggestion from the state emergency managers. BD's following through on their request. Uh, two of our nuisance properties are still going through court, have been set for trials and keep getting reset due to older cases. That's kinda typical of them. Unfortunately, with court system. At least it's stuff that's moving. You wanna do the resolution, remember?
And those nuisance property hearings that goes on state charges. At this point, is it?
You know, I don't remember how that works. Um, I, I, I believe it is a, a state citation. But if there's an ordinance. You know, stating otherwise, I, I don't remember how that works. I, I, I truly don't remember. Even when I was, when I was working here, it was always the chief that took care of it, we went and identified the properties, took all the pictures. And then submitted it to the chief and from there. I don't remember how it went, yeah.
We got a couple of resolutions to do, take care of those.
Uh, yes, uh, first resolution is resolution twenty twenty five zero six, resolution of the city council, the city of Monaga, Minnesota. Accepting a donation to the police department, whereas the veteran of foreign wars, VFW post six two zero six has generally. Generously donated seventeen hundred dollars to the Monaga Police Department and whereas the donation is specifically intended to assist. With the cost of a necessary transmission repair for one of the department squad vehicles and whereas. The city of Monaga and the Monaga Police Department greatly appreciate this contribution, which supports the department's ability to maintain reliable emergency response services. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council, the city of Monaga, Minnesota, that. The city hereby accepts the donation of seventeen hundred dollars from the veterans of foreign wars, VFW post six two zero six with sincere gratitude. Funds shall be designated specifically for the transmission repair of Monaga Police Department squad vehicle. The city clerk treasurer is directed to ensure proper documentation and acknowledgement of this donation adopted by the city council of the city of Monaga, Minnesota. On this day, the tenth of March twenty twenty five.
I get a motion to that effect. All those in favor say aye.
Resolution twenty twenty five zero seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Monaga, Minnesota, accepting a donation to the police department. Whereas the Monaga Police Department has been awarded a two thousand dollar grant from Sourcewell and whereas. The grant funds are specifically intended to assist with the cost. Of a necessary transmission repair for a department squad vehicle and whereas Sourcewell provides valuable support to small cities. And the city of Monaga greatly appreciates their continued contributions to public safety and municipal services. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council, the city of Monaga, Minnesota, that the city hereby accepts. The two thousand dollar grant from Sourcewell with sincere appreciation. Fund shall be designated specifically for the transmission repair of a Monaga Police Department squad vehicle. City clerk treasurer is directed to ensure proper documentation and acknowledgement of this grant. Adopted by the city council, the city of Monaga, Minnesota, this is the tenth day of March twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Yep.
Please give me a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero. Alright, what's this for? First up is selling THC products at Northbound Spirits Discussion or Action Memo. This was another thing we did discuss, uh, planning and zoning with the members and. They had no issues with it. Uh, it's very, it's simple, it would be just gummies and THC drinks, correct, Heather? Only off sale. They're not being sold in the on sale part of the bar. People come in, buy them, they go home, they do whatever. We did run this also by Amy. Uh, we had questions for her and she responded immediately, no issues. Didn't have problems with any of this kind of stuff, same on the cannabis, and no problems with that, it's alcohol causes more problems than. Anything else, so. And we do, what is it, twenty percent of the tax collected on this, we get back others, is that right?
Yes, twenty percent comes back to your local.
So that's just on the tax end of it.
And the tax is a ten percent.
So. How does it compare in cost to like a six pack of regular beer to a six pack of THC?
Uh, well, I don't know if they come in six packs, they usually come in four packs, you know, usually around twenty bucks.
It's like five dollars you can.
Yeah. And Dorset has them for more than that, they charge like twenty six, I did some research on them. Like twenty six bucks for a four pack and bottle, seventy one balls is twenty, nineteen something. And then you got all that extra tax on them.
And then you can help itself a single. That's from anywhere between six and ten bucks, we don't know what it is and where it's from.
Is it pretty good margin?
Very good. That means all come from one of ours, already one of our distributors, so it isn't.
I've only really talked one distributor, he has. The most popular ones, the ones I could ask for a lot. That everyone has their their own products.
Kind of a nice deal, we don't change distributors or anything, the, uh, our insurance costs a hundred and fifteen dollars a year to add the, that's it.
I understand that the motivation here is money. That's what's driving this recommendation, it was the money for the city. But I did online a lot of research on this. And a lot of the research I did was on Mayo Health. Out of Rochester. And THC is highly addictive. It, uh, causes the body to release dopamine, which is what gives that. Euphoric sense of high that people crave. And the site said it is, it is habit form. And and while we are. Uh, looking to raise money for the city and and preserve expenses where we can, as we should. I just don't think, I just can't feel that this is the right thing for a city to do. It's a product that I I think we would be better off staying away from.
What does the research on alcohol say?
For for myself, and I don't mean to sound preachy or anything, but a higher power. Is directing the eye, I absolutely can't support this. For those reasons.
What does the research say on alcohol?
Alcohol too can be addictive, as any alcoholic can tell you. But I don't think that's a valid argument to add another addictive product to the offering line.
Bill, you got an opinion on it?
Well, I mean, it's certainly hard to argue with what Mike said, I think you look at statistics. Look at, uh, what, uh, addictions do to families, to marriages. To employers, when people can't. Make it to work, uh, your rebuttal to what he said was, you know, what are the stat lines on alcohol? Uh, my personal opinion and my convictions are just as bad. You know, it's it's hard to. As a city, and I and I and I and I get it, okay, so it's not up for debate, I'm not going backwards, I'm going to close a. Liquor store, I'm not implying that, but I think what Mike is saying is now is returning the page. Looking to add to the repertoire of what we offer as a city. Um, it's a valid point, um, there's lots of. I won't say conflicting, but you know, other side of the equation. Statistics, I talk about medicinal purposes and the benefits of it and. You know, it's, it's just, I, it's hard to know which way to, it is hard, I would say, my own conviction is that when something is. Known to be, um, habit forming, uh, addictive product. And we live in a culture that fiends on addictive products, now you pick your poison. Whether it's caffeine, sugar, liquor. Cannabis, you pick your poison, right, but nevertheless, I think what Mike is trying to say, and correct me, I don't want to put words in your mouth, is that. A- a- as a city municipal entity. It is one of those things where it's like, are we aiding? In the process of supporting families and growing healthy, a healthy community? Or are we aiding in the culture? That is supporting more addictive habits and profiting on their. Their lack of self-control and 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 that, so I, it it's a tough, it's a tough thing. I probably wouldn't have even have, I mean, you brought up a good point, which then got me thinking. And, um, of course, here you have it. Um, eh, you know, is is it necessary, I mean, we always have to look ourselves. Half of what we do, is it necessary, is it based on pleasure, is it based on just? Or is it a necessity, you know, like, you you need your milk and your eggs and your, you know, you need your food and your substance and clean water and. I think those are the things that you want to have in a city, right, clean water. Good housing, you know, a district, good schools. Law enforcement, fire, things that like, uh, make a community safe and attractive, and you want people to move into it. Good public works, all those entities clipping at a high level, bringing in, you know, maybe another form of. Of a moneymaker that, um. And I'll, and I'll end with this, potentially would lead to more. Destructive nature and the breakdown of some families. Then it would add to the medicinal benefit. I I'm not a doctor, I'm not a scientist, so these are just questions. I don't even have a definitive answer, these are just talking points, you said, what do you think? This is what I, this is what I think, trying to process it.
I would, I would add to that, Bill, that that's another aspect I didn't mention, but I read about this. There is medicinal benefits that they discover with THC, but that is under a doctor's control. It's it's the same as the doctor prescribing. Heroin for a patient in the last stage of their life with cancer. And it's instructed to, you know. Give this amount, no more frequently than this, it's done under. A doctor's medical control, so there's a wide difference and. And I agree, I, I think that the city. Should focus on, as as Bella said, making it a wholesome place to live, a wholesome place to raise a family. And that the destructive nature of THC. And Bill said it far better than I could, it it destroys families. Yeah, people lose jobs, uh, they they lose their financial. Stability, it it just is all in colors.
It's not just the THC, I don't have any battle with THC.
This is not smoking dope on the street, I want you to understand, most of, most of what you're talking about is. People that are addicted to smoking, these are edibles and drinks.
That's what I was researching, THC.
Whether.
Keith, you got it?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm to it. In in a way around about, I mean, I ideal that probably the most out of everybody, but. That that being said, I don't drink. But I don't hold it against anybody else that drinks, we we own a city owned, a a li- a city owned liquor store, I'm not going to say. Cause I don't drink, I don't want the city owned liquor store. Whether we sell THC, I don't smoke marijuana, I don't, I don't plan to. Uh, but I'm not going to stop something from, if there's a, if there's a, obviously Heather seen a large demand or request for it. Whether I agree with it or not, I think if 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 it's in demand for the community. I mean, I'm not trying to look at for money wise, but it's, if there's a demand for it or a request for it, I.
But that's the more, the motivator is the more.
It is, but I mean, there's, but. At the same time, as if somebody opened up a a pot shop in town.
Right.
There's a demand for it.
I think there's a fine line difference, and I I forgot to mention this, but. You mentioned, we, a a previous, you know, resolution or we had was giving. Variants and and, um, where are we going to allow? Uh, zoning for the cannabis, okay, and you said we can't stop it, fine, it's a business, it's legal. Uh, and I would say that if we decide. Yes or no on whether our city owned liquor store. Uh, sells, uh, THC products, that is going to be, it's regardless, anybody. Can then go, I mean, it's one of those things where, I think the fine line is, do we as the city? Want to just follow suit with culture? Um, or, I mean, it's going to be here, yeah, what you're saying is like, oh, the demand, oh, people are coming in and they're wanting these, and these are popular and these are hot. And, um, okay, well, we don't sell them, but they do. Now, if financial on a business, you're like, hey, we're missing out on all those profits. But then you look at the product itself and it's like, you know. We, we're going to make our money, this is what we do here, we sell liquor. You know, it now, now it's THC, in another two, three years from now, what is it then? And then do you, I mean, do you just keep moving forward with what the culture demands, all for the money? Cause there's good money in it, I'm not doubting that, from a business perspective, I would say solid. Like, there's no question, but it's just, what are we going to make our money on, I personally will never. Ever allow myself, first I'm not in that business or, and I'm not judging, I'm saying my convictions are, I will not. Set anybody up for failure. I'm also not pouring anything down anybody's throat, I'm not lighting anything up for them, but just my own conviction. I have based my life upon trying to build people up and prevent them from failure. And that's the only thing I'm trying to say is, it's it's just a fine line, so whatever.
Heather, do you know what's the milligram? Or the amount THC?
Five, it's, uh, five in like, I mean, it's, it's a joint, so five to ten.
Bill, what is your thoughts?
Well, I mean, very good, uh, explanation. Talk coming from both you gentlemen and Keith as well, but, I mean, if you look at it from a business perspective, I mean, people are going to get it. And if the dispensary, the wine shop is up in Monaga, they will be selling it.
Right.
It's probably being sold in Park Rapids, is it?
I just want to point out dispensaries can only sell the plant in the. The plant form, they don't sell.
Right.
Gummies, they don't sell THC, dispensary.
We've got two other entities in town that have already applied to sell, they're registered to sell this stuff already. So it's going to be here in towns, is your point, let Derwin finishes.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, it's, it's, and then the taxes that you're collecting are like a, they're a sin tax.
Yeah.
But it's revenue generating that, uh, sometimes, you know. What's, how do you make that distinction and what is right, there's moral convictions coming from both you gentlemen. But I think at the end of the day, when you look at opportunities to sustain. Uh, revenues coming in to offset taxes. I, I would say this thing is common, it's it's available. And if the city misses out on it, I don't know which pers- perspective, sales are going to be, is it going to be? Twenty thousand a year, fifteen thousand, ten?
Um, when I talked to the insurance lady, she had a liquor store that was closing into the hundred thousand dollar mark.
Really?
At the end of November.
There are other municipalities, so.
There's, I think the last time I checked, because I did, you can go and see who's registered online. And I want to say there was twenty three throughout the state.
Municipal liquor stores, then?
Out of how many liquor stores, municipal liquor stores?
I guess I don't know how many we have total. I was just looking at the people who were registered and which ones were municipals.
But yeah, addiction is addiction, I mean, uh, you know, I I know people that have been alcoholics and have come back out of it, but. Um, you mentioned nicotine, I mean, there's all kinds. They gambling, I mean.
I mean, pick your poison, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, you pick your poison, but. I mean, from a business perspective, and that's kind of the, where I come from at times. One out of ten, all the time, I mean, if it's going to benefit the city financially. And reduce taxes. For the citizens, uh, I don't think we should miss the opportunity.
Well, that's, I haven't said much about it, but I'll I'll bring that up, we are. City is a business. And that's what we do, we're here as a business. The liquor store is our number one cash cow. I mean, that's where we bring in a lot of money to keep the taxes down. For the citizens, and because everybody knows we've got a lot of elderly, we've got a lot of low income people. We help keep our taxes low, lower. By what we can take out of that place, and we're constantly telling Heather, hey, find us ways, make us more money, what can we bring to the city? And this thing's happening, going to happen in this town, whether we let the liquor store sell it or not. It's going to be here, it's right next door now. So if we are going to turn our backs on the profits and. And next year, do we have to get more in taxes from our citizens or not, I'm not here to be the moral police and. People have their own, they judge things their own way, and that's fine, but I'm here. To run a business. And on the business side of it, it's a no brainer, I mean, it's just an absolute no brainer. That's that's my take.
Purely from a business standpoint. Yeah, becomes a no brainer, because boy, look at this money.
Yep.
But it's not, it goes deeper than just money. The money, the money is what you see, money is what you see, the money is what you feel. But behind that money is where the story is being.
Right, but are we going to tell her she can't sell whiskey? Because whiskey's worse than beer.
Again. The liquor store is there, the liquor store is in the business of selling liquor, and that's a different issue. I don't see why the city. I don't see why the city. Outside of just a pure revenue standpoint, outside of that one single argument. Why a city would want to introduce another product? Which has been shown to be highly addictive, which is destructive, it. It destroys families, it destroys jobs, it makes. People. Less than they can be. It it brings them down instead of lifting them up. It brings a lot of negative with it. The only upside is the money. That's that's it. And.
You gotta remember, certain people get benefits out of it.
And.
Too.
Sure. That same argument can be used, Jody, for the guy selling crack on the street corner. There are certainly people getting benefit out of it also.
Talking health benefits, not.
Oh, the health benefits. Well, yes, but they're not gonna get those health benefits from the liquor store. They get those through their doctor. Under a medically controlled environment.
But there's people that have used the me- prescriptions through the doctors, so I mean.
But we've heard. How did you say, you know, it's a it's a business, you know, we sit here. We we're trying to manage the city. City's a business. I get I get all that. And so, you know, if we're gonna capitalize on this. Products, um, like you said, it's a no brainer. It's a no brainer. You did good, great work, did your research.
Well, I think we've got, I don't know, we've been on this for. Quite some time here, so let's call it for a vote.
Well, I don't really just found that the moral police, like I said, I I thought this through and I talked. All that's the app one. And the higher authority is telling me I can't support this.
Alright, so we'll call it for a vote. Approve the city's store sale of low potency THC products in accordance with Minnesota law. Ensuring compliance with all state regulations and responsible sales practices. We get a motion.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Just give it a second. I'll second. Fellas in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same saying.
Aye.
Aye.
Pass is three, two. You like the dope is the who's on roof repair. So we got the quote. We still don't, they haven't given us a schedule on that yet, I would imagine.
My, it has to be put on.
So they have the two options on here. The one was. To replace the roof. During the full roof for forty-five thousand. The other one was to do repairs for eighty-five hundred. And I know we've repaired this roof. Seems like we repaired this roof at least twice. And one of the comments I know they made when they looked at it is this is the flattest flat roof they have ever seen. A flat roof is supposed to have a little bit of slope to it.
It is.
And I believe part of this is they're gonna correct that and give it that little bit of slope by adding this inch and a half of. Of insulation up there and and the wood blocking to. Cover it.
The presentation we talked about. Red outlined areas and highlighted blue. Well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's around the big air conditioning unit. On the spot. That's where our leaks are at this point, and that's where there's. Issues.
So we've got water infiltration taking place right now. Are you have to put out buckets to catch any water or is it just?
Bring out, if they've been lucky with the snow.
Two edges.
But I know in the years past, we've had to bring out the garbage.
Yeah, it looks like a little.
Um, if there was no smell, we're good, but.
Now, we did clarify that any of their.
Oh, yes.
Timing materials just had a hundred and fifty bucks an hour if they find.
Yeah, I think that is.
Other stuff going with it.
Well, I think to protect their investment in the structure of the building, I don't think there's really gonna be a place anytime soon, not setting it.
No.
That was a question running down. How long do you think it will be until that building is replaced? In other words, how long do you anticipate gonna get out of a brand new roof?
Got a twenty year warranty on it.
Well, the one. But how long do you think that building should stand before it's poured on because new ones built?
More than twenty years, I'm assuming the way. The way we're going, I mean, we have to start putting a lot of money away every year in order to build. We kinda lost that opportunity in the past when we put the parking lot where it is. And at that time, there was no money to build either, you know, because we could have built a new one where the parking lot is and throw this one down for the parking lot, but. That's.
Well, if it got built, we're going the east end of the park.
Go here. In the woods, yeah, I'm in the liquor store, it'd be over there.
Yeah, we'll stand, yeah, where the parking lot is now, yeah.
But I know the building at that time was a million plus. But a liquor store. And that's just not in.
And that was.
Orange was about same.
No, it was a bigger footprint and it had a different type of off sale, but.
And that was.
I don't.
That was quite a long.
It was like six, seven years ago, Pat.
Seven, eight, yeah, I think it was the last, I think it was the last couple of years of Pat when Pat was mayor. So yeah, so it'd be eight, roughly eight years ago.
Look at construction costs and that since then, if it was a million, then we're at. Two million now, probably.
Well, wasn't there talk about remodeling the inside of the store also?
There, yeah, that's. So we gotta get, the roof is the big thing because we're not gonna do anything inside until our roof is a hundred percent.
Well, I understand that, but I'm I'm trying in my mind to think, well, new roof forty-five thousand, what is gonna be done on the inside? So I.
We're talking about the tile floor getting replaced eventually. And what was what was first on the list, though? After the roof, it was the roof. And that wasn't the floor?
Is it in the floor? Is it a correct?
Um. So that's kind of the priorities is roof and cooler and floors. And of course, the inside will get freshened up as you do the floors, you do some painting and whatnot. That's kinda incidental on that end, but. Floors and tiles and pretty rough too.
Well, if that building is gonna stand for the long term, long term meaning say fifteen years or more. Uh. Then to me, it would make sense to replace the whole roof if it's that bad.
She just said they had incidents where they had to put out garbage, uh, cans to catch the water.
Or sweeping inside.
If you spend eighty-five hundred dollars to repair these couple of little areas, then two years from now, you're spending eighty-five hundred to do a couple more.
Yeah.
And like I said, the roof is flatter than any flat roof should be, so. It's kind of a knock and a bunch of stuff.
Did you tell me how long you thought it would take to do the full job?
Um, I don't.
I think it was like two days.
Like a. Two day. Project for them and then an extra day or two for them to metalwork.
Four days, you have the whole roof done?
And it will not. Tract our. Business issues.
Well, with all this new money the liquor store is gonna be getting, it should be able to build a new store soon.
He's got the money. He already optimized the layers. They give you.
There's a silver lining in every cloud, mate. That would make that motion, Jody, to move forward with the full replacement.
That's the option A. I'll second that one. For option A.
Forty-five thousand dollar full repair.
Yep.
Fellas in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Much praise five zero. I don't know, you can hit one. There's already, you can get on and skip them. And we have the excess property resolution.
Yes, uh. Gentlemen, there are two parts to this. Uh, the part that's on the top of the resolution, the that is going to be uh sold for uh some monetary value. On attachment A to this resolution is our our items identified by Heather that have no value, take up space and need to go and. Without further ado, I will read the resolution. This is resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three, resolution of the city council of the city of Minnoga, Minnesota. Sale and disposal of excess property from northbound spirits, whereas the city council of city of Minnoga, Minnesota. Has identified certain items of city owned property that are no longer needed for municipal purposes. And whereas. The city council wishes to declare these items as excess property and authorize their sale to the public. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Minnoga, Minnesota. That the following items are hereby declared excess property and approved for sale as is with the specified minimum bids. Commercial kitchen, three sink, minimum bid five hundred dollars. Time clock, minimum bid one dollar. Thever cooler, minimum bid twenty-five dollars. AML inventory gun, minimum bid five dollars. Small chalkboards with chalk, minimum bid one dollar. Various office space, office supplies, minimum bid five dollars. Miscellaneous glassware, minimum bid five dollars. Filing cabinets, three, minimum bid five dollars. Various Christmas decor, minimum bid five dollars. Various chairs, minimum bid twenty dollars. Multiple displays, minimum bid five dollars. Casio electronic cash register, minimum bid ten dollars. Sharp ER dash A four two zero cash register, minimum bid ten dollars. Be it further resolved, the city council authorizes city staff to advertise and conduct sale in accordance with applicable laws and policies. Be it further resolved, the city council authorizes the disposal of items listed on attachment A affixed to this resolution. These items have no monetary value and take up valuable space inside the liquor store. Adopted by the city council of the city of Minnoga, Minnesota, this the tenth day of March twenty twenty-five.
I get a vote from you.
Motion.
Sir. Second. Discussion.
After they don't sell, what's the plan for that? They keep trying to go for sale or are they gonna just eventually say?
So if they don't sell.
I I just wanna make sure that it's it. We get, she has the authority to, I mean, obviously we're trying to sell it, but. If they don't sell and the deadline ends.
Yeah, we get them up.
Yeah.
You know, discussion? I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Those looking three five zero. Public Works Water Plant Generator Maintenance Plan. What do you wanna? Do you have anything on here you need to go over or?
No, that was more informational. Yeah, I don't need to come up there at all.
Yeah, Ron, please.
I could go over the list here first if you don't do. I mean, the first thing on the part was planned maintenance for the standby generator.
Have we, is that gonna kick in at all? Have we used that?
Hey, does it every Monday. And then when the power goes on, we've had. Six power outage. So, yeah.
But every Monday is just an automatic test of it.
Automatically test every Monday for thirty minutes. So waits. It kicks off the power for five minutes, lets everything settle down. And then sends the generator power to the water plant and then runs it for thirty minutes and then cycles back down again also. So. I mean, what it's doing that if a high service pump is running. It still will trip. Trip the high service pumps.
Hmm.
And we'll have to reset them. So. It had, it's. We tried getting it figured out, wind down, however. But it'll still do it with high service pumps.
Only if they're on at the time?
Yeah. And most than every, well, every ten minutes, then doing it, it ends up. Tripping home.
Was that because our generator is undersized?
No, it's. I don't know if it's because it's winding down. But. And they did the load test and everything and it cleared. I mean, we were, we were. Plenty power going from that generator to charge everything that was running at the water plant.
So we lost power at one o'clock in the morning and it tripped those high. What do you call them? High?
The high service.
High service pumps. We wouldn't have any water being pumped into our power then.
Right, we get a phone call and then we end up coming in to reset, to reset the highest service pump. So. One high service pump at a time. Usually is the only, only aspect that's running. So it'll trip that one and and reset the VFD. So it'll trip the VFD, but the other one, the other high service pump will pick on. And run. But then we have to come in and literally reset. That VFD on. But um. With this generator aspect, we have, we have it on our phones that we can pull up the system. And we can start, we can reset the high service pumps on the screen itself.
Oh, you don't have to, you can drive it and you.
We don't have to drive in to reset the, to reset the panel. It's only when it trips the VFDs. So we can see the difference with our phone if it's a VFD. Or if it's just on the panel itself.
I'll answer that the next time it does it on that test. See if it is on the wind down. Cause that VFD might be tripping if it's on the wind down because it's sensing a lower voltage or a lower something. That might be tripping that VFD.
Yeah, we'd have to be in here, in there at that time when it's like a Monday or.
Would you be able to do that so we can get a handle on if that's the case?
That's the case.
So then we would know if it's something with that VFD, because they got so many sensors on them.
Yeah, Brooksman, Brooksstrom's wired that in, right?
Fair.
Have you talked to those guys at all?
That's who ended up doing. Was here with comments when comments installed did the generator.
Do they know what's going on now so they could double shoot it for you and they can't figure it out, huh?
It hasn't been. Figure out.
But they haven't been here on Monday when it's doing them.
Not when it's doing it.
Hmm. Let's see, we can, let's see, we can get that nailed down so we can get a handle on it so it doesn't happen in the middle of the night sometime when we're. Desperate for water for some reason.
Okay.
Would you guys agree? I mean.
Yeah, no, that makes sense to me.
Kind of important to do.
You guys go through the the generator, the one that's in the fire hall? You you guys monitor that or is that?
That's not on its own ma- programming. We we look at it.
Okay.
But.
I mean, that doesn't run very much either, but. I think there was one time there was an issue with it not firing up, but.
Yeah, the battery wasn't being charged, so we put a new charger on it.
Okay. I was just curious.
We wanna do have motion for that, so. While you were on that, or?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve any uh five year plan maintenance.
Is there any budget?
Yes.
I'll give a second to that motion by Keith.
Same.
Any discussion?
So. Will they do this, send it all?
Just got a quick, I wish uh it's per year, you have different amounts per year. So the first year is twenty-two thousand seventy-eighty-three.
Are they gonna bill us all for the full five years at once?
No.
It's a pay as you go.
Pay as you care, but.
It's water.
You have something, Bill?
Yeah, I know. My question was when they come in to do the service, uh. Are they, uh, do they do a oil analysis or they automatically change the oil for that one thousand one or seventy-five dollars?
No, it it had it on here. It tells you exactly what they go and do. Um, full service, annually full service, diesel fuel analysis. And inspection. Um, so their systems, system inspections are batteries, controls, fuel systems, cooling systems. So it has the available talent. On there, it it runs it all the way through. So they'll do the load bank testing. On the, on it. Also.
I know, when I, before I got into it, I was looking at that. That's why I asked you how if nothing runs, because like if it runs twice a year, does it need a full service of you? But that's why I was checking and you said it's been on six times for emergencies and then it kicks on every Monday for half hour.
Yep.
So that answered my question on that end of it.
Yeah, because when they installed it, they actually did that load bank test. So we got the C. But. With it, we haven't hooked up the water tower. And uh, the wellhouse one yet. So that's gonna also get hooked up for that, for that water tower.
Is there, is there a digital screen printout of the results of every Monday test that you're looking at?
They have that screen right there, but that's.
That gives the results of the test each Monday?
Yep. You you can open up the panels and when it's running, it'll show you what what the load is actually at also. When it's pumped.
That was planned.
Okay. So when they were here doing that load bank test. We had flipped on all, all the high service pumps. We flipped on all the, all the pumps. In the plant. All the heaters, everything was running, to test how much their bank actually was doing. Oh, what the generator was. Taking in.
Remember there was, there was adequate for that, had on the water tower and all that?
Yes.
Great, okay.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. All post same sign. Motion for period five zero.
I did.
Keith, and Bill, second.
We had the beach house lift station wastewater treatment. And yeah, agreement thing in there. Also have a bullet point, you know? I can read off the bullet point. For the reason of a aerator and degreaser for that lift station. So. Aerator for a lift station, aerator introduces air into that wastewater which helps with several critical processes. Order control, oxygenation, vents formation of anaerobic conditions which leads to production of hydrogen. Hydrogen sulfide gas. Primary cause of fall orders. Preventing septic conditions, aeration keeps the wastewater from becoming stagnant, reducing the risk of the lift station turning septic. And lead to corrosion and inefficient operation. Reducing grease and solids buildup, aeration promotes mist mixing, preventing grease and solid materials from settling, accumulating at bottom. Or forming thick layers. Improved biological activity, oxygen helps beneficial air aerobic bacteria breakdown. Organic matter in the wastewater enhancing the lift station's efficiency. Corrosion prevention without aeration, aeration anaerobic conditions can reduce acidic byproducts. Which corrodes pipes and equipment over time. So you get that. Aerobic and then you got the degreaser. Is the use to manage and remove fat soils and grease can clog pipes, pumps and pipes. Prevents clogging. Five tends to solidify and create blockages and pipes and pump impellers, reducing efficiency and potentially causing backups. Nance's equipment longevity, removing grease buildup protects pumps, valves and other mechanical components from damage. Caused by straight, strain and overheating. Maintains lift station capacity, excessive grease can reduce the effective. Capacity of the lift station, making it harder to process incoming wastewater. Degreasing ensures pumps operate at peak performance, avoiding energy. Energy waste due to grease related obstructions. Then reduces the maintenance cost.
Why, why did you specifically call this one a lift station? Is there a reason?
This one, this one is, has a pit and then has our dry. Our pump's in the one section and it's in a heated area. So we can have that pump feeding the aerated and everything into that lift station, it's right at the beach there. So we get smell like crazy during the summer. And it's, we always have to have a pump by bike. Which if we can get that, keep it aerated. Keep, keep the degreaser in there, all them solids won't pack up. Wish hopefully not be able, not have to have bike come in there and pumping it out. So.
So is this, uh, this lift station, there's a lot of grease going in or what's, where's it coming from?
The, all the businesses around town.
So really close to that lift station?
Main street south goes there, right?
Yep, so you can get, yep, you got all the restaurants on, or in this area. Lower to that lift station, from that lift station that it pumps it over to the.
And the school also, right? So it's a pretty heavily pumped station.
It is.
Is your room in the budget? This is your, yes. I'm sorry?
Yes, this is for sewer and what else, uh, there. This saves us money because when we have someone come out here to pump it, uh, that, that also costs a lot and then. This also, uh, will help keep the pump running versus getting backed up versus now pumping harder. So.
You know, placing the pump.
Very expensive prospect, yes, and, uh, I asked Ron these exact same questions. Because what, what are, what's the gain here? Because to me, this looks like we're just spending four hundred and thirty bucks a month for what? Well, i- it turns out it's, it's gonna be savings in the long run, so.
Fifty-two hundred dollars a year.
And how much?
How much bugs putting there, we end up with about it. Eight hundred dollars every two weeks, three, no, every two months is eight hundred dollars.
And then didn't you say that when that gets treated there with this pre-treatment basically, then that's getting pumped to?
Pumped to the main lift.
To our main lift.
Which will help treat the main lift station with the water being pumped out to pond. So it's all gonna connect and then it's gonna be doing a pre-treatment before getting out to the.
Didn't you say we save, we save three million gallons worth of storage space out there when we started using the bugs, which this would?
This would also.
Help promote that, so, cause we had lost three million. Gallons worth of storage in that number one pond from all the sludge and garbage.
Really?
That's a lot of water, that's a lot of space and it would have been, what, a million dollars to dredge that pond?
Yes.
And all, this is all part of the, I, I questioned him on this earlier, because it was like, it was like, wow, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was back when, before we ended up putting that sewer, sewer in there, we had a four foot high island by. Fifty foot radius on and on one.
So you won't have to have this pumped in the future then with this system in place?
That's what we're working on.
Yeah. Eliminate that and it should help the other ones and it will help the main pond also.
So your ROI is a no brainer, right?
What is it, what is it, how, how? How often do you have to have bike come and pump it?
Twice a year.
And how much is that at?
Um, when he come and do the whole thing, it was eighteen thousand. I'd have to look at the prices again, but when they did all nine, all nine lift stations plus. The storm drains.
Yeah, that's where at least a thousand a hole basically. But this eliminates three holes.
The, this pump that we're talking about.
And, and the saves on this other stuff.
How old is it?
The lift station?
I, I mean.
Seventies?
Yeah.
The lifespan of one of those.
The pumps just got replaced in. Twelve, two thousand twelve. And the one, actually two of them got rebuilt back in fifteen. So you kind of look at pumps, lifespan usually is around that fifteen to twenty years.
Okay, that's what I was.
They can be able to get out of the pump.
My only thought was.
But that's the submersibles.
Okay.
These are in a dry bit, so these should be able to last longer.
Okay. I was just trying to weigh out balance, you know, if we're trying to save and prevent failure. On a, uh, on a, say a vehicle, on a newer car, you're willing to get those regular oil changes in high insurance, you want to preserve it cause it's fresh and new. But something, if you got a beater, you're not putting like full coverage on it, you get my point? That's why I'm wondering, you know, where are we at with the lifespan of the pump which you shared? Because if we're trying to preserve it, which is a good practice, so make sure it's worth preserving.
Well, and this will make life on these pumps a lot easier too.
Yeah. I mean, the, the new lift station ain't going in for, you know, unless all catastrophic failure and. Whatever. Yeah, afraid that never happens. So.
Yeah, throughout the time this lift station's been getting updated, you know, I mean, we've. Been putting.
Yeah.
Different aspects into it.
I'm taking a motion to approve beach house lift station wastewater treatment agreement for a monthly fee of four thirty-one fifty-two.
Soon.
Please?
Yeah.
You have a second?
Second.
Well. And just to clarify, this is something we can cancel at any time. Also, I, I believe when I read through it. If we chose to cancel it, we can cancel it in December.
We chose to, then it would be, they take their pumps and stuff.
It's not like a year contract where we're committed twelve months. Hopefully, just monthly.
Monthly and if we decided.
Okay.
Sorry, for some reason it wasn't working. You know, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All post same sign.
Other things, so the MNDOT needed a new, uh, front rate axle. Sixteen as far as gonna need a, needs a new alternator having that go in on Thursday. Our water quality, grounders samples, the Department of Health going in.
Would you, uh, be willing to come to our place to do water sample and bring it through, you try it with?
Could do that Wednesday because we're bringing water samples in on Wednesday.
There's loads of gosh coming through that line. Yeah, if you could just.
See what it is?
See what it is, yeah, I was, I showed you pictures of it.
Probably the same stuff that. Like little block chunks and stuff.
Oh, no, it's just like a orangeish, clayey stuff.
Oh, stuff coming out the pipes that have been.
Probably that cast iron.
It could be all that, that added buildup of.
They would be able to identify what that's still doing, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, if you wanna stop by Wednesday. Unless you wanna give me the container, I can fill it for you.
Well, you can stop, I can stop by Wednesday, give you a call Wednesday morning sometime.
Sounds good, thanks.
Um, cause new addresses are being added to that lead and copper samples for the year two thousand twenty-six. I'll be collecting new addresses if we wanna put your address on there, new lead copper sample. And have your address on there.
Twenty-six. Main street southwest.
That's just an ongoing thing we're doing, right?
That's every three years of that, um, lead and copper sample. So you take ten samples throughout town. And then the results actually get sent back to the homeowner from the samples. Then the safety grates in the garage being replaced, finished up. The floor grate.
There was a ding on our inspection unit.
Then I did, I just have to have one more, one more person come and give a quote for that. Um, garage floating over there.
How many quotes are you getting?
Around two to three. Call, two more, two more and get quotes on, on that floor. And then roads will be getting road potholes and roads will be grit and graded when weather permits. And I know everybody wanted to get gung ho last spring and called, calling nonstop asking when potholes are getting taken care of. When roads are getting graded, when chloride was being put on the road, we're gonna get with.
Gonna wait for the season.
Yes. So getting it, getting the word out there, we, we will get, we're not forgetting.
What do you start doing, buck holes?
Um, last year it was in end of April, May timeframe. When, most of the time when the fro- frost is.
Out of the soil.
Out of the soil.
Your thing.
Yeah.
Do it after the road, road restrictions go on?
That's most of the time that we kind of go by, it's more watching. All the roads are farming, how many more potholes are popping off?
So you don't have to do it three times?
Yeah.
Are there any streets in town that are coming up for total repaving, refishing?
Well, this project, once it actually decided to go through. But.
It'll take care of fire, but.
We're on hold right now from any. Any type of source, so funding sources.
Yeah.
Twenty-five is nothing.
What about seal coating, being down, that seal coating?
Still coating was. Um, saving up in there for another year. For seal coatings.
Twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, cause it's around, it's around been. Around that thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollar range with the distance that we've been doing.
How many streets?
Um, last time we did.
Or what is the distances away? Thousand feet, two thousand feet.
It's quite a bit more now.
Yeah, I don't know.
Seems like we covered quite a long ground last time.
Sixty-two hundred? That was all that, yeah, I think it was around sixty-two hundred feet.
We put that in, we put that seventy-five in the budget to save one year and then the next year we got the money.
Yeah, we tried, we've been trying to do it. But if this project actually goes through, then it would be probably pushed until twenty-seven. So it all depends on how this project, we're hoping that this project can because we, then we can get this project in before. MNDOT actually does theirs in twenty-eight. Cause then we gotta get that water done by the school and get all that tied in. Before MNDOT's gonna come and do seventy-one. So it's gonna be a busy summer.
One year.
I'm gonna get everything marked. On seventy-one for all our curb stops and everything, then for them out, so it's, it's gonna be something fun and busy.
Fun, I like that.
Thanks, Ron.
Yeah.
Laura, do you have connections report? I gotta be able to see the back of your head.
It's like, oh, I got a good table there, I have to sit right there. Oh, boy. Okay, I'll just make this really quick. Everything is great and wonderful, nothing to really discuss. Um, no, it is good, actually, we had the survey for the assisted living last week and it was a speech week before last, I don't know, I'm runs into it, so. Uh, and it was really well, um, I hadn't had a survey for three years, they're back on. Get a survey two years ago or three years ago with the new license and. They're, so they're about two years, but they're, they're every two years, but they're about a year behind, but, uh, we had it and it really went, it went really well, so. Um. Said it was a great place and everybody should take the template to what this looks like and for the nurse over there, the job she does and yeah. So that was really good, lots of compliments. Uh, our census has been really good, um, for. We're at sixty right now, which is at ninety-two percent, I would say for most of February, we're probably around the same, around sixty. Fifty-eight, our TCU has been full. Census is good, um, for January, we had a, a profit, uh, for the month, um. Our census, uh, was eighty-seven percent for January.
Issues been full?
Well, not, not all the sixteen bed, we, we have really, I should say, I shouldn't say full, so it's about twelve to where we were staffed down. For us to go up to the sixteen or really to go further, we do go to twelve, uh, or to fourteen, um, on. If we have someone that's gonna be maybe discharging there a day or two, we might be up to fourteen in the TCU. But we have not, I mean, it takes kind of a difference, another staffing level for, to go to sixteen, um, it's just, it's what, because. It's another half a person, even at twelve, they kind of use another half person, so you have to staff a little bit differently, but, but it's been good, that's where we wanna be is.
Was there a specific reason why your actual income was over double your budgeted?
Cause I budgeted about eighty-two percent, cause I actually have got that myself, um. So over double, that was about why we had a forty percent.
You had seven, thirty-eight, seven budgeted when your actual was eighty-six, five.
Oh, uh, for the, um, profit, you're looking at the profit, I'm thinking about the revenue. Um, so with a forty-seven thousand. Was our profit for the, for the month. Um, I actually calculated it because, um, I budgeted around eighty, eighty-two percent, which I've said in the past, about eighty-two percent. Eighty percent and our census was at eighty-seven percent. Average for the month. We were above, above our, above the average, what I had budgeted for for census.
And those five extra beds or that five extra percent would be that big a difference?
For, uh, for the TCU especially, I mean fifteen, eighteen thousand average month.
Well, that's what we've talked about before, depending on the service level.
About fifteen to eighteen, so it really, it's really, I mean, I actually looked at that myself before the, because this is January and I just put, putting the budget in. So I looked at it, I'm like, why is it so far off? And I looked at it, calculated out, if we had put four, at forty thousand dollars less, we would be at eighty, eighty-two, eighty percent and we're at eighty-seven percent, so. So hopefully, we, I mean, looking at it, we should have a profitable month for, for February then, and if we keep it up for, for March at ninety-two percent. So hopefully, we, I mean, looking at it, we should have a profitable month for, for February then, and if we keep it up for, for March at ninety-two percent. So this will, will do well for March as well. We, um, there's a donation in here and I didn't think to point that out to you, Brett, and I don't know if you have to have a.
Yeah, so uh, we'll talk offline and then it'll be on the agenda for the thirty-first.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I didn't think about pointing that out to you when you had the resolutions on there for that donation, I was like, I should have pointed that out. Um. So they just finished installing the cameras or the TVs, um, they're in the process of installing the cameras, uh, TVs, I mean, it's really nice to have a. A clear picture because we have not had that for a long time.
Is this simple, just getting ribbon cable TV, that's the deal?
So they must have gone with a different. Yeah, something different themselves. Um. They, yeah, they said they had to, so they're not using coaxial anymore, which I don't think so, yeah. So, as far as a, a market study, I have reached out to, um, some kinds of, some, um, firms on, on that. I might have some information for the next board, board meeting and maybe can bring it to the council, um, for the next council meeting or. If you wanted to on the thirty-first, don't know, I guess the board can decide that, what they want, like what they're thinking for time. Came up in the, in the long-term planning, um, because we have a sixtieth anniversary, um, in June. So it, it did actually come up in that, that it would be nice for them to have something done, not, not just a. Just an idea, like what to look for in the future, so if we're planning on building apartment buildings, that would be something nice to be on display to say, if this is what we're looking for. Come on, yeah, so, um, to display, uh, you know, like, uh, highlighting the past, present, future of the facility, um. Some of the ideas that have come up now, we have, it, it was brought up that additional ideas, bringing them to the next board meeting, um. And then it was talked about that we would have something probably in June, uh, the sixtieth actual anniversary is May first. I'm going to say May first, I mean, don't quote me on that till I tell you, I think it's May first, but I wanna, I said, we were just talking about it earlier, so, but May first of nineteen sixty-five. So, um, but we talked about having it in June where the weather is a little bit nicer, it's still a bit cool. Not sure what we're going to do, so there was, yeah, some discussion and they're supposed to bring out more discussion, but.
Spend up to a pretty good sixty-year investment.
On the east of the, for the potential building site, um, is that kind of, that between the existing two? Wings of the assisted living?
As to the east there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or is that, um.
So where that old houses and the garage?
Yeah, the garage is still there, um, where the house was, was it, was it more of a property?
Okay, I, I, I'm like. Trying to figure out which one it's, I didn't know if you're gonna, would go off at an angle, but.
Yeah, not really sure, yeah, on that, um.
That's just my dumb questions.
No, that's like, it, it is like, we did talk about it saying that we could walk back there, you know, in snow, and also one of our meetings coming up to see.
We saw that and I was gonna say it might be nice to include the council on that tour. For the council can also see the, the vision of that.
Yeah.
You know, it's a good point, I think everybody should.
Okay. Okay, so. I think that's all, that's all I got, I can't think of. Anything else right now.
First, I saw another question again, did not see any reporting through your agreement with board. About contact with Department of Commerce Insurance Division on Humana.
So I, I didn't report that to them, I actually looked back at the minutes to see where they, and there wasn't, it was like. In the minutes of it, Mike had suggested, so it wasn't a directive to me, or last month you said, I had not followed the directive. But I did actually do an online, um, report to them. To the, to the commerce. Just since our last council meeting.
Have you heard back?
No, 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 I haven't, we received, received it, so.
The acknowledgement, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I actually did it in two steps because the first one I was actually doing from home, you have to kind of set up an account and then. I actually then sent an email to them, so, and then I, then I sent the, the second step on it, so.
The copies of the correspondence you sent to Humana that they never responded to?
Uh.
You can provide commerce when they start.
So, so that they never, they never responded to it, but yes, they have. I mean, I don't know how much time you want me to invest in, in this.
Few thousand dollars, it's worth something.
So that they are going to, they're going to pay us.
That was like six thousand, wasn't it, that Humana is not.
So the commerce by re-reporting this is going after Havana and they're going to get our money back, is that? When you reported, you know, who else actually reported it? Resolution that they paid you back, I don't.
I wasn't much paying it, paying it back, it was more of an insurance denial thing based on during, through COVID. And I had to go. Through this commerce department, who then sent a letter to the insurance company who then said, oh, okay, by the way, we can pay your stuff.
The state is suing him.
And, and all of these businesses do not take Humana anymore, and the reason is, like, the clinic will no longer, they're not going to pay. Three and a connection back the money that, I mean, this is the reason why nobody is, that they're not going with them anymore.
Well.
So.
It's worth some of your time, I think it was six thousand if I remember right, that, uh, Humana amount that was charged off.
Uh, yeah, something like that, yeah.
So I think it's worth some of your time to pursue it.
But if the state.
If we get some of it back.
The state's already suing.
If the state sues them and wins, will they have to pay back what they owe? I'm assuming the state would say, you owe this money to these places.
That's what the state does, is they're, they're the, they're the, uh, representative of the insured.
So the state's suing them, the state's gonna go after them for the money.
Right.
So by us adding anything to it, are we doing any good? Or are we just spinning our wheels and wasting Laura's time?
I need the information that the state may ask for, that's why I asked Laura. And if they do ask for it, does she still have that correspondence, Humana refused to reply to?
I, I'm going to be honest that I don't, I myself don't exactly know the correspondence, I believe that it was. And this is why I said before, that the claim was paid, the claim was taken back. And appeal was in place, so we probably, we have the appeal for Humana, but then I know response on the.
Well, whatever documentation.
And I know response on the appeal. Which. I mean, sure, I can, I can do that, like I said, that when you said it was a directive, it was a. Suggested, but there was no motion or.
The council previous, when the council would need that, it would be.
At the same time, like, with any, with any lawsuit that the state puts out towards anybody, the federal government even. So now it's the state, state of Minnesota versus Humana, and now all of a sudden, you know, they say, okay, the state, the state won the case. Now they're gonna put out, okay, who was. Has documentation that they were denied a claim for Humana, kind of like. Measal, you know, measal theory, I mean, you have a claim for that, you put in the claim and if you have documentation, you'll get. Money towards it, so. I mean, I, i- if it's me, I would wait to see what happens with, with the. How the whole court process.
As I said, it is if the state asks for it.
Correct.
I didn't say go dig it up and send it in.
But I would, I would just say, wait until they're, the whole litigation is done and then when they, when they requested.
I'm sure you have a file on it.
Yeah.
That's as long as.
Oh, we, we're not having to.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the monthly report and financial as presented by Greenwood Connections Administrator Laura Hall. Keith, you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll post same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Laura. And then the fire department, we've got our sheet from whom? Structure fire in Blueberry, two vehicle crashes in the city. Two structure fires in Sibika that they helped out on.
And one of the crashes was literally right at the city limit, so one car was in the city, one car was in the county, so. Or Blueberry Township, so it was. Huh, no, the one right here on the south of the town, so it was a horse of peace, it's, so it went to the cities.
And they just had a car on fire today.
Yeah, right before, that's right, we, we got back and it was a rush home to get my stuff to come back.
Where was that?
Right on the Hubbard Line Road, on the south side of the, on, what, Indiana County side of the Hubbard Line, so. Yeah. Yeah, just the vehicle, nobody. Yeah.
More unfinished business, we've got the resolution for the pay scale twenty twenty-four.
Read it.
Yeah.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one, resolution of the City Council of City Monaga, Minnesota, adopting the twenty twenty-five pay scale for city employees. Whereas the City of Monaga, Minnesota is committed to maintaining competitive and equitable pay structure for its employees. Whereas the city has conducted review of its pay scale to ensure alignment with current market trends, but, budget considerations. And the responsibilities of each position, whereas the proposed twenty twenty-five pay scale reflects adjustments for cost of living, position responsibilities. And employee retention goals, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Monaga, Minnesota. Detached twenty twenty-five pay scale labeled as attachment A is hereby adopted and shall take effect on one January twenty twenty-five. Be it further resolved, the city clerk is directed to implement the twenty twenty-five pay scale and assure all relevant payroll adjustments are made in accordance with this resolution. Adopted by the City Council of the City of Monaga, Minnesota, on this day, the tenth day of March twenty twenty-five.
This is what was directed at the last meeting to come up with. We are. Exactly what this is, exactly what we told that to move forward with and come to us with. But we just needed to approve the actual resolution of it.
Nothing's changing the space scale from what we've seen before.
The only thing that was different is the admin clerk has been moved down into that, as we talked about earlier. They moved down there, but we also kept it up top. In case things change. Leaves a little more flexible for if something was to.
Well, you get paid, the admin clerk gets paid less if it's non-union scale.
Correct.
Gets paid more on the non-union scale.
Or gets paid less, if you look at step eight.
But they were, we moved from step fifteen, that's what we talked about earlier, moved from step fifteen. To the union scale, step eight.
Oh, oh, she was on fifteen, that's right.
And that was prior to this pay scale.
So she actually took a cut in pay.
No, because she went from the twenty twenty-four pay to the twenty twenty-five pay, so she's got a raise, cost of living raise.
Oh, yeah, right.
We're still.
Right.
Yeah, it's still good.
Jody.
Where she sat aside.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
You have a second? All second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all post same sign. And then as a follow-up on that, we've got the employee movement on the new pay scale, this is just, I think we do this every time too. The motion would be to approve the employees will maintain their current step level on the twenty twenty-five pay scale with the adjustment taking effect January first, twenty twenty-five. If they're on step eight, they're still on step eight on the new pay scale, whatever step they were on is where they stay, just with the new pay scale. So.
Is that good?
Keith. Any discussion? As all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, all post same sign. Here's five zero. Union, that takes us to the bills. Anybody have any questions on the bill?
I didn't have any questions on the bills, it was just a couple of things on the budget.
You get the new budget, or not?
Well, I was going from.
That was in the twenty, that was all twenty twenty-four, so we got that corrected today.
Oh, you did, okay.
And that, that's my apology, when you open Banyan, it doesn't automatically go to the newest month. So, uh.
So the, the new printout, the new printouts that we're on here is the new.
Yeah, let's just give you.
That's just on the budget, so the bills didn't change anything. Anything else on that?
No, make a motion to accept. And approve the batches.
All right, batch. To approve batch zero two two eight two two five E F T for eighty-five thousand four seventeen sixteen. Batch zero two one nine two five pay, seventy thousand one ninety-two seventeen. That's zero three one zero two five pay for twenty-six thousand eighty-three dollars and twenty-four cents for a grand total of. One hundred eighty-one thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-seven six, Keith, you made a motion?
Yeah.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll post same sign, motion carries five zero.
I just got one question before we even, I went down by the beach just for, I didn't see any beach signs, did I miss them? You know, about swim at your own risk and that kind of thing?
I do not.
It was. You like, there's still that big, the big, like the billboard still, it was a can't like a. Yeah, and I remember, and I don't know if it just, it. Cause it was there when I come years when I worked here, so I mean. It may have just gotten, uh.
Yes, I can, uh, I do have one. Yes. Uh, I have one thing before adjournment, uh. Councilmember Netland, uh, if you'd be so.
Sure to give a check, thank you very much.
Oh, say no more, uh, the next pay period, uh, the rest of you will be getting, uh, compensated for the year. Um, and then, well, up till, up to now. And then, uh, Councilmember Netland, I believe you have some checks that also need to get. Everything.
Okay.
Uh, Alvin or Kelly will get with you, uh, and just make sure the publics are leveled, that's all.
Set up on direct deposit now?
Yes.
I know I turn my paperwork in.
Everybody else is good, we just needed to.
So is Mike's gonna be a monthly check then?
Yeah.
All with those two, three months, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
All right, take most good journey, no.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. We're adjourned at nine oh five.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll follow you, there was Keith and you can go and be, have those back.
I move, Keith's second.
When do we have our work session?
Thirty-first. And, uh, we are in German, so, uh, thank you everyone for coming to the stream and we are ending it now.
Oh, you're welcome, Laura.